Okay, good morning. It's 10 a.m. We got our new sound system. It sounds like it echoes. Uh, we ask you, if you're able, to please rise for opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene the commissioners' public meeting. Heavenly Father, we call upon you this morning as we gather to conduct the business of the county. We're thankful that we can call upon you during any moment of the day, and you've created us with a desire to have a relationship where we can acknowledge, depend, and seek your guidance and wisdom daily. Today was, we celebrate the National Day of Prayer, proclaimed in 1952 by President Harry Truman, and moved to the first Thursday in May by President Reagan. The National Day of Prayer is observed by millions across our great land. Our founding fathers recognized the importance of prayer in our Creator, and we also recognize the importance of prayer, not only on this day, but to incorporate in our lives daily. And Lord, tomorrow we'll celebrate the 120th birthday of the Pennsylvania State Police. We pray for these officers and all officers' safety across our land. Remember the ones that have been taken from us, and we continue to comfort, ask you to comfort their families and friends. We earnestly pray that each shift will end peacefully with these men and women as they seek to keep peace in our communities. Next Tuesday, we'll recognize National Nurses' Day. In 1982, President Reagan proclaimed May 6th to honor our nurses. The nurse is often the first and last person you see at a hospital or a medical appointment. Over 3 million working nurses make up the highest percentage of the U.S. healthcare workforce. Nurses are most likely to suffer a back injury in the construction work due to their work of lifting and moving patients, and they often work long hours and work continuously in very dangerous situations. We thank you for the nurses whose dedication, passion, and attention to detail makes them the special people they are. We ask you to give them strength, good health, and rest as they care for others. Lord, today we'll celebrate the Lady Lancers basketball team and their coaches. They have worked hard to accomplish their goals and have brought excitement and joy to their family, friends, and community. We ask you to bless each one of them as they move on to the next season of life. Now, we ask you to guys through the meeting this morning with wisdom and clarification for your will in our community. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. At this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting, morning, and ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
We have any public comment on agenda items on me? Any online?
Uh, we're still trying to get online.
Okay.
It's not.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, uh, hearing none, then we have a proclamation, a special on the day, and we have Commissioner Sortman, uh, who's going to be, uh, reading it.
I'm excited to be able to read this, uh, since I'm also a Loyola Sock alumni, so I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this to the Lady Lancers. Uh, whereas the Loyola Sock Township Girls Basketball Team, the Lady Lancers' theme and mantra for the year was "Purpose." And whereas the Loyola Sock Township Girls Basketball Team won the PIAAA Class III State Championship on March 27th, 2025, defeating their opponents, the Shady Hill Academy, 55 to 43. And whereas this purpose led the Lady Lancers to become the first Leicoming County Girls Basketball Team to ever win a state championship. And whereas the Lady Lancers clinched the PIAAA Class III District Championship on February 28th, 2025, moving them forward to the state championship game. And whereas the Lady Lancers also won the Pennsylvania Heartland Athletic Conference Division Number Three Championship with a perfect 10 to 0 record. Whereas they finished their season with a 30 to 2 record. And whereas this was Loyola Sock's ninth straight state tournament appearance under Coach Curtis Jacobson, who recorded his 199th career win as a girls varsity basketball head coach. And whereas the state championship is earned through years of hard work, dedication, sacrifice, support, and commitment from all members of the team, their families, coaching staff, who put countless hours into making themselves and the teammates better. And whereas family, friends, fans throughout the county, and the Loyola Sock community have come together to rally support and encourage for the Lady Lancers throughout the season, now come to together, come together to celebrate and honor them, honor the team, the coaches, and the staff as they celebrate this momentous accomplishment. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the commissioners of Leicoming County, proudly proclaim May 1st, 2025 as Lady Lancer Day and urge all citizens to celebrate with them and continue to sow their support of these young ladies with purpose. Finally, Leicoming County Commissioners, Scott L. Metzger, Mark C. Sortman, and Mark Messina.
Congratulations, ladies.
Say a few words, and your coaches are welcome to join you, and the athletic director.
We left you on the island alone.
That's right. Um, just want to thank you guys for having us here today. Um, you know, as you said, every high school athlete has goals to win a state title. Um, usually it's not a reality. Um, I didn't think the first couple of years that, you know, it was a reality for us either. Um, we'd always get to the state tournament. You'd lose to somebody in Philadelphia by 40, um, and you'd just never felt like you belonged with those teams. Um, you know, this group is, you know, probably, we've had really good teams, um, really good players, but probably the toughest team we've ever had. Um, they weren't going to take no for an answer. Uh, we, we made it to the Final Four last year and felt like we could have won last year. Um, it didn't go our way. Things happen, that's sports. Um, but for these kids to, you know, go through some adversity, kind of battle back and have the opportunity to do it again, it, it just doesn't happen very often to too many people, so they've earned every second of it. And like you said, they, they've, it's, it's much more than just a year process. It's a nine-year process, but, um, you know, they, they've earned every step of the way. Um, our two senior leaders, they're, they're just tough kids. Um, so it's nice to have the players we do. Um, we do have the state player of the year, too, so that helps. Um, but you know, it's, it's everybody kind of doing their role, um, performing their role, understanding that I'm going to practice really hard, and I might not play in tonight's game, but I still have an impact on the team. So that's, we have 15 of those kids that showed up every single day and, um, you know, they all have their kind of stamp on the team and the program, so, um, it, it's just a credit to these girls. They, they work really hard and, and earned it. So, thank you again for having us.
Great, thank you. Like to have each team member, uh, stand up, introduce yourself, say what year you are. Okay, thank you. Which was the player of the year? Congratulations. Is Lisa here?
She celebrated.
She celebrated. Okay, good, good for them. Okay. Coaches, administrators. Ben, stand up, please.
Ben Larson, the athletic director, and I'm going to echo Coach Davidson's statement. Great to report these ladies with every bit of the accomplishment and every bit of the reward that they earned throughout the season, throughout the many years this program, so thanks for it.
Anybody else?
I'm Jeff Everett, and I'm just happy to be here.
Just happy to be out of school, right?
Jake Seagull, same.
Harry Davidson, Mrs. White, love these girls. They have been like our family, so actually been a little odd not to see them every day for the past month, so every little bit that we get to celebrate them, super appreciative. Thank you guys for having us.
Jason Perry, uh, I've been with these guys for four, five years. Can't say enough about them. Free kids on and off the floor. I would, I would have everyone miss as a child, no questions. Thank you after having us.
Commissioners.
No, uh, uh, again, you know, I'm excited, uh, that, uh, you guys are, are the first female team to take the state in Leicoming County. What an exciting honor that is that will go down in the books for the history of your life. Um, no one, no one can ever take that away from you, so you got it. And you did a phenomenal, a phenomenal job. Um, and it is exciting when even your rivals start showing up to your games because they wanted to see you win. So what a great job, and, and, you know, again, I can't say, can't say enough to you, but congratulations. Yeah, I have, I have lots to say. How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Um, that's what the timer's for. First of all, I had my, first time I've done this. I had my gold on because I just wanted to try to class up the room a little bit. Anytime we get to celebrate Loyola Sock, it certainly warms my heart. But as Curtis said, you're not supposed to win. The way the system, the system is not fair. You know, little schools like Loyola Sock are not supposed to win. You're supposed to lose to the private schools, so it, it makes what you did even more impressive. I know, um, Jeff and I are really good friends. We work together, so I talk to Jeff all the time. I know.
Don't be telling me.
By the way, did I tell you Houston was going to kill them last night?
They timed it.
Um, I know that, that the girls that played a lot of minutes, I know you guys were beat up as the year went on. Jeff would tell me how practices got tough kind of at the end because we're trying to get ready, but we've got people that are hurt, and it's hard to practice hard when you're hurt. So as, uh, you know, as people sitting in the crowd, we often think that the athletes, if they're on the floor, they're fine. And, um, it's not always that way. And, you know, obviously, seeing my brother go through the big leagues, I know it wasn't that way, and to watch you guys play, you would have no idea that you guys were, um, not always 100%. Um, which is a testament to you. I mean, it's, it's how championships are made, but it's, uh, I just thought it should be mentioned because lots of times people in the crowd just don't grasp that. Um, another thing I wanted to say was, no matter what your role was, because I know there are role players in, in every, there are people that come to practice, and your value is at practice. Um, there's people that play and they're, you know, but you don't have to be the state player of the year to have enjoyed your ride. Um, you had a unique part in this. You had a unique vantage point in this, and it is a great story. Whether you were a freshman who played JV, who just got to watch and go through the layup line, or whether you were a starter who played 32 minutes a night. Um, it is, it is a special accomplishment, and as you get older, you'll appreciate it. Um, and the, the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, it's one of the things as kids, we don't, you know, you only know what you know, and you've come through and you've got to play, and you got to play for these coaches, and you just kind of think that everybody is like that. And it took till I was an adult and got to see my kids go through it, that I really appreciated some of the coaches that I had looking back because, um, you don't always value how good your coaches are because they're all you know. And, um, some of your coaches I don't know that well. Some of your coaches I know rather well, and, um, I wouldn't say that you have the best coach in District Four. I would say that you have the best two coaches in District Four in all of boys and girls, um, Xs and Os and philosophy, and, um, there's a lot of talent, obviously, sitting in the chairs, but you guys had a lot of talent sitting on the bench, and that's, it's the only way you can pull off something like you did that you are not supposed to be able to do. And it'll probably wait till you have kids and your kids are playing, and you watch them do something, and you're like, wow, that's not what we did. That's stupid. That doesn't make any sense. So, um, just believe me when I tell you, um, you are as lucky to have them as they were to have you. And that's, again, that's how you go 30 and two and, and beat teams that you're not supposed to beat. So, um, it is, and, and one of the other things that someone said somewhere along the line, like it, after a while, you know, when Toursville, we hate you guys, until you keep winning and winning and winning, and then, and then when Toursville people are traveling across the state to watch you play. Because after you've won long enough, then, um, you know, everywhere, people, you know, Leicoming County doesn't want you to win until you get far enough, and then everybody wants you to win. So, so by the time you got to, um, where was the game that the bus? Where was that? Yeah, yeah, when you got stuck on the bus. By the time you got there, like, everybody was rooting for you, so, um, it is, it's an accomplishment and, and, um, you know, just, it's a memory that obviously you'll never, you'll never get to, um, no one will ever be able to take it away, and, um, it'll probably mean more to you. It'll, your memory will change as you go through. And, um, I also, I wanted to say to, um, you know, you have the stars of the players. Where, who's, where's the Bashing? Where are you? You were great in the, in the semis, because I know, like, you got stuck game because you got in foul trouble, and you had to play a lot, and you really, like, when you came in, I was like, oh, we'll see how this goes. Because by the way, you don't, you don't want to commit two fouls like a minute into the game. That's never, that's not a recipe for success. But, um, but you came in and you played great, and that's, that's part of the aspect of life, too, because, you know, we're commissioners, like, he's the most important commissioner because he's the chairman and, and, but we go into lots of meetings where all the people at the table are more important than us, and we just sit and listen. So sometimes, you know, in life, you'll have your starring roles, and you'll have your secondary roles, and sometimes you'll get stuck in a position where you become really important and you didn't know that you would. So, uh, yeah, congratulations all. It was, it was really fun to watch.
Oh, a couple of things I'd like to mention. You have coaches that are very good, but truly care about you, which is, which is amazing. And you're, you're blessed with that. Just a huge asset. And, uh, you know, they'd do anything for you. I, I know a couple of them personally, and I know they truly love you. Number two, what high school sports do in a community and how you bring your community together. You got little kids coming to your games and, you know, grandparents and their friends coming to the games and then having them travel. And I see that as, as you advance how they follow you. You know, that social media is big, and they're on social media. Did they win tonight? Did they, how are they doing? You know, they're not even waiting till the game's over. You have to score. Can you tell me what's going on, the ones that can't go? But, you know, I think back at, back in 1984, when we have sport was, was where you girls were at, and that team. And they sold the tickets. They don't stay, have online, they didn't sell online. There was a place downtown where the gas company was, and there would be people lined up down the block at nine o'clock in the morning getting tickets in February. Okay, that's what you win and does to a community. You know, they'll stand in line, they'll, they'll get on a bus and, you know, hey, is there a bus going tonight? I want to get on that bus because I want to wa, I want to go watch Lady Lancers. That's what you do. You bring out that excitement. And then the role models, what you're doing for young ladies, young girls, and the girls in the elementary program. You know, they want to be you someday. So think about that. And the role you have now to play as an ambassador for your school and for your teammates. And then lastly, as we are a team up here, I'm not any more important than these guys. We're a team. Okay, the county's a team. You're part of the team. You stepped up for them, and you excelled. There's expressions, next person up, next man up, next lady up. You know, when somebody's either hurt or they're in foul trouble, and it's that person's role then to excel and bring that team together to win. And you've done that throughout the season. I know some of you played hurt. I know some of you played really hurt. And, and that's what you do. You do to, you know, to achieve your goals, so hats off to you, your amazing group of young ladies. Uh, you know, whatever you do in the future, this is going to be huge. As, as you get older, you think, jeez, we're the only girls basketball team ever to win in this county. That's amazing. And you'll have reunion someday. You'll be talking about your experiences, and it'll be a lot of fun. So share those memories, have fun doing it. You got a bunch of good players coming back next year, Curtis. So.
No pressure.
No pressure. But the main thing is enjoy the moment. You work hard, enjoy the moment, because once it's gone, it's gone. And you go on to the next season of life, and, and somebody might play on the next level, which is really hard to do. And, uh, but at the same time, uh, you'll always have this, you know, this group. No one can take it that way from you. And, and remember, your role models now for that, those younger girls, not just in Loyola Sock, but the whole county, you know? And, and they want to be like you because you're, you're a winner. So thank you, and thanks for being here. It's an honor, and it's, it's a privilege for us to honor you.
When, when he says your coaches love you, next year, play lazy defense for a couple of trips up and down the court, see how much they love you. And go home, the love comes and goes. That's how, depends how the games go.
Another thing is go home and thank your parents, if you already thanked them. Because, you know, last, last week was the NFL draft, and it was really cool to listen to those, those guys get drafted and then thanking all the people that were part of their journey, especially their parents, and the sacrifices that they did to make sure they got where they got, you know, running the practices and being there, and but go home and give them a hug, thank them, because they love you more than anybody. So, and we want to thank them, too, for, for making you what you are, a winner.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'll say that. As a guy who played, and it is way harder being a parent and watching your kids play. And the guy, the coaches will tell you this, when you play, at least you feel like you have some control over what's going on. You feel like you have a lot of control. When you're, as a coach, you feel like you have some control. As a parent in the crowd, you're just chewing your fingernails off, and you're just, and you just, you want your kid to succeed because you don't want your kid to fail because the, the emotional roller coaster that your parents ride through is, is real. And again, that's something you realize, too, but, uh, you can't possibly appreciate what it's like to sit in the crowd and watch a family member play until you are that person sitting in the crowd. But it is, it's way easier to play than it is to watch.
Okay, we'd like to present the proclamation to you, and you get a group picture of you. Hold mine, okay? Great, thank you. Come here.
Right, count to three. One, two, three.
Good seeing you. Now, most people leave at this point, but since you have to go back to school, I'm sure you're not in a hurry to leave. Okay, thank you. Moving on, reports. Nikki.
Commissioner, we also have an addition to the agenda.
Okay. For, uh, Nikki, before you start, we have an item that we, uh, are looking to add to the agenda. Uh, Maya, do you want to?
Yep. Um, this is an agenda item that was not previously posted. This is Agenda Item 6.20. It's vote to approve the agreement with R. and J. Erdel and the amount of $11,000.
Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep.
Nikki.
And Mr. Messina, as you can see, I am dressed appropriately today.
Nikki, can you state who you are, what your role is?
Sure. I'm Nikki Gachal. I am the Leicoming County Controller and a Loyola Sock alum.
I don't know what the controller does.
Oh, so we are in charge of accounting, auditing, uh, payroll, accounts payable, retirement for the county. Lot of numbers.
Yeah, so if anyone has any interest in accounting, they might go to school someday for accounting. Accountants are needed everywhere right now. There is such a huge demand for accountants. So if you have that interest, you're probably going to find a employment right away after college.
So she's elected, is elected. Um, the difference between the treasurer and the controller, the treasurer is like the bank that takes the money in, and then the controller like takes the money, that's part of the checks and balance system. And also, I would say she loved Loyola Sock so much, she moved away from Loyola Sock, and now she lives up here.
Listen.
Okay.
I just want to point that.
I don't live in Toursville, though.
I just wanted to.
There's that.
Okay, Nikki.
Um, so commissioners, I have presented for your ratification our invoices due through May 7th, 2025, to be paid on April 30th, 2025 in the amount of $1,299,478.68. Out of the general fund, that's 45.26%. Uh, out of the ARPA is 1.75%. Other grants are 15.56%, RMS is 36.75%, escrow is 0.67%.
Okay. So for the ladies, I don't think any of your parents sit at home and think, I gotta pay, I gotta pay $1.2 million worth of bills this week. That's a lot of money that has to be paid in one week, so.
And when, when your parents are complaining about their taxes, that's every week we spend about $1 to $2 million this building.
So it's a lot of money you have to go out one week. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Mark?
Oh, aye.
Aye. Hey, thank you. Thank you, Nikki. Information, Mr. Hagan. Can you state your name and what you do?
Yeah. This is kind of like The Price is Right.
Yeah.
$1.95, Bob. Mike Hagan, I do the, um, Director of Human Resources. I am not from Pennsylvania.
You guys even know The Price is Right?
Isn't it, though?
But it's not Bob.
It's not Bob anymore. Been Bob for a long time.
That's, that's true.
That is true. Do you care?
Anyway, I'm not from Pennsylvania like everybody else. Uh, you'll hear my North Dakota accent come out every now and then, so pay close attention. Uh, informational item, uh, we have an elected official personnel action in the coroner's office. Kennedy Snook. She's a deputy coroner, uh, pay grade seven, $19.4688 cents per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually with an anticipated start date of May 5, 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Director of our HR department. Okay, Monica.
I was going to say, not that you care, but as you mentioned, that the elected officials hire their own departments. So, like, if you're elected, like, the controller, the coroner, the sheriff, we cannot hire and fire. We can't walk into their department, tell someone they're fired. They get to hire and fire their own, so that's why he's just telling us something that they did that we have no control over, but he's just announcing.
Um, good morning, everyone. My name is Monica Fox. I work for Cedar Cog. We're employed by the county, and I'm a project coordinator, so I administer a lot of the grants, like CDBG funds, ARPA funds, and Home ERP. Um, today we're doing an announcement for the federal fiscal year 2025 CDBG schedule, so on behalf of the commissioners of Leicoming County, I'm pleased to announce the opening of the federal fiscal year 2025 CDBG, which stands for Community Development Block Grant, uh, Program. This program utilizes HUD, um, Housing and Urban Development funds through the Pennsylvania Entitlement Program as enacted by Pennsylvania Act 179. So that's where this funding comes from, um, through that act. So for federal fiscal year 2025, Leicoming County estimates that it will receive $276,255, which is what it received for 2024, so we kind of use an estimate for that. Um, eligible activities include broad areas of housing, community infrastructure, economic development, and public services. Specific activities may include property acquisition, recreation, so like park recreation, um, and senior facilities. Funds may also be used for public works, water and sewage development improvement, and the removal of architectural barriers. Um, that's Um, that's mainly for people with disabilities. So if someone has um the inability to walk, so if they're in a wheelchair, we make improvements to like the sidewalks and stuff so that they can use the sidewalks appropriately. Um, in order to receive input and to solicit proposals, a public hearing and project development workshop will be held on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six P M here at Third Street Plaza, third floor and conference room three nineteen. Uh, this meeting will provide information regarding the program and more importantly, will assist communities in developing their project requests, including determination of project eligibility for CDBG funding and methods to determine if your project serves or provides a benefit to an area that is uh over fifty-one percent uh low to moderate income. So we generally do our projects for uh people who qualify based on their income levels. Uh, lastly, if you're unable to attend this workshop on uh May thirteenth, uh, you can complete and submit the project summary form, um, which you can request from me. Um, my email is monica f at CEDOC-COG.org. So um, and I'll just quickly note that the first public hearing for twenty twenty five funding is May thirteenth at six P M. Project summaries are due June sixth uh twenty twenty five, which is a Friday at three P M. And then the Lycomen County Commissioners will do project selection on July seventeenth uh at ten A M. Here again at a commissioner's meeting, and then the final public hearing will be on September fourth uh at ten A M at a commissioner's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Monica.
Yep.
Hey, Maya.
Uh, the next item is acknowledge that the county is going to be requesting bids for Plunkett Creek's block house and a Will Plain Creek's fish habitat enhancement project. This is a hundred percent grant funded through the community action planning grant.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll recess. Commissioners, public meeting for salary board, convening the salary board at this time.
Okay, commissioners, uh, the first item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next item I have in the planning and community development, do you want me to go through these one by one?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, yep, delete the transportation supervisor pay grade twelve.
Have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, delete the community development leave planner, pay grade twelve.
Have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Add a transportation planner, pay grade nine.
Have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
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 And then add a community and economic development planner, pay grade nine.
Have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and reconvene to commissioners' public meetings for personal actions. Mike?
Morning again.
So for clarity, those uh that those personnel actions that were just done for the TDA, that allows the individual to be placed in a seat. So now we can hire for those positions. So now, uh, we'll go through some personnel actions, which are the department heads. So this would be your non-elected officials that could, uh, if they have vacancies, could hire a position. Uh, so we'll approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment. Subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. An adult probation, Jennifer Cartanya, administrative case officer, pay grade seven. This is a full-time position at nineteen dollars point six five six cents per hour. At eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated transfer date, April twenty-seven, twenty twenty five. In the pre-release center, Robert Harvey, resident supervisor, this is a union position, full-time, nineteen dollars, twenty cents per hour. At eighty hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, May eleventh, twenty twenty five. And in the prism, Adam Ganem, correctional officer, union, full-time, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, May five, twenty twenty five.
Okay, motion to accept the three personnel actions.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for a second. Michael. Your first.
Welcome back. Uh, vote to approve the training services agreement with Pennsylvania School of Technology in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. This is a twenty twenty-five approved budgeted item. This is a leadership development course. It's actually four days going throughout the year uh where we can put up to twenty-five uh individuals to learn uh leadership mentoring and uh resilience and time management practices.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest here?
No, but in his absence, I can address. Um, so this is vote to approve the chief clerk as the county's accessibility coordinator.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
All fair side?
Aye.
So Forrest Lehman is the head of the voters. So when you, people go out, vote every, every year, primary in the, in the general election, Forrest runs the voters' services, which is a huge responsibility. And uh he does a great job with him and staff. Okay, moving on to, is Nancy gonna call?
He's probably gonna call. I'm seeing, I'm sure I see if she's on.
Nancy, you there?
Yes, I am.
Nancy, we have a, a group of young ladies today. The Lady Lanterns basketball team is here. Could you just briefly state who you are, what you do, and and how you service the constituents of Lycomen County?
Uh, I'm Nancy Shank. I'm the administrative specialist for Lycomen County.
And you work for juvenile probation, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Alright.
I facilitate the contracts and paying of invoices and pretty much anything Cisco related to juvenile probation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you have an agreement for us to vote on today?
Yes, uh, we are asking for your approval for our contract with Dinges, Dinges and Walt. Um, he is the contractor that provides legal services for all juvenile cases handled by formal court. And there is no rate increase. Um, he should be compensated in equal payments of three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars a month, which shall not exceed forty-five thousand dollars annually.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. Second.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good day.
You too. Hey, Gary. Gary, can you state your name and a little bit about what you do over at the landfill and a little bit about the landfill operation?
Yeah, so I'm Gary Stagger, the deputy director at the Lycomen County landfill. Um, so I'm number two in, in command. So we oversee all the departments at RMS, recycling, waste placement, transfer station. Um, the whole deal. So there's a lot that goes on there. Um, energy production, the cogen and, and all that.
It's about a twenty million dollar operation over on the other side of the mountain where all the garbage goes. And uh if you ever have an opportunity to, to tour it, you think, why would I go tour a dump, place where they dump garbage? It is a lesson on chemistry, and I mean, there's so many different sciences that are tied into this. And it's extremely educational about what goes on over there, and they do have public tours. Uh, it's pretty, pretty cool watching all the heavy equipment, what they do, and uh the methane gases, and what they're doing with the methane gas. Um, it's really educational, so.
Yeah, so as your waste decomposes, as we place it, it produces what we call landfill gas, which is mostly consisted of methane, and that's piped to a cogeneration plant. There's four giant caterpillar engines that burn strictly off that, that gas being produced. Then four engines are hooked to uh generators that produce altogether six point four megawatt. Uh, to put that perspective, that's about enough electricity for six thousand, four hundred houses, so.
Guys can swing by on your way back to school.
Alright, thank you, Gary.
Yep. Um, item six point four is vote to approve the agreement with Montronics for the LCRMS transfer station. Montronics is the people we use for security uh and fire alarm system.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, six point five, vote to approve the agreement with Montronics for RMS uh landfill shop buildings. Same thing, just different building.
Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Uh, six point six, vote to approve the agreement with Montronics for LCRMS admin and scale house. Uh, same thing, just different building.
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Six point seven, vote to approve the agreement with Montronics for LCRMS pump station.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one for that is vote to approve agreement with Montronics for LCRMS recycling building.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Alright, next one, six point nine, vote to approve agreement with Bergy Truck Center. And and the purpose of this is basically it was some Berry Motors, Bergy bought them out, so it's just, that's why the contract has to be updated, just different, different name.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, six point ten, vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Greenship to extend terms of the agreement to December thirty-first, twenty twenty seven. Uh, that's our program that we're in for like recycling electronics, TVs, monitors, all that stuff that is not allowed to go into the landfill. Uh, we collect them there and uh package them up and everything, and then we do get um revenue uh by poundage through this green chip company. Um, so we do make money off of that.
Okay. Uh, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Uh, last one, six point one one is vote to award R and L Development Company for the leachade force main project in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars. Um, this is, these funds will come out of our closure, closure money. Um, this is to install a six-inch force main to pump our leachade from our place, our lagoon to uh WBRA wastewater treatment plant. The current one we have is over thirty years old. A very small one. It's a three-inch, very thick wall. We've had trouble with that line since day one. And uh much higher concerns now after being so old. This, that, the current line we have is over three miles long as well. This one will be probably less than half that distance. It'll be a six inch and a lot easier to maintain.
And motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
And and on top of that, we did do studies. We figured this, installing this line will pay for itself in less than four years versus having to truck so much leachade out of there.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Gary, before you go, uh, you've mentioned about certain things you can't dump into landfill.
Uh, so there, there's a lot of things. There's a lot more that goes into it. I'm, I'm still learning myself. Um, we have a guy down there that deals with all of our customers, so if you're a business and you produce, you know, wastes, residual waste, that all has to be approved. A lot of it has to go to laboratories and get tested. It could be something as simple as sawdust, and they still gotta test this stuff out, make sure it's able to be placed into a landfill. Obviously, there's certain kinds of radioactive, radioactive waste, which every vehicle comes in our, our scale uh to bring in waste. We have sensors, it's mandatory, and just a little bit of radioactive will set them off and, and alarm us. We gotta test it, see what it is, how high the levels are. We can accept some things, but uh someone that maybe had uh um some kind of procedure done, that, that they had radiation, a driver will set it off like, like that. Um, full tires, we can't take full tires into the landfill. Any type of hazardous waste, we can't. And the biggest thing we're trying to keep out of the waste is lithium batteries, because they've been causing us a lot of problems, not just us, but any waste place. Um, great technology, good performance out of the batteries, but they can be very dangerous if they're not treated well or damaged.
And if they can start firing.
Oh, yeah, really quick. I witnessed it myself. It's, once, once they, they go into uh they get damaged and they go into, I forget what it's called, uh thermal runaway, there's no stopping it. It's gonna take off. And it's.
You have one of those batteries in the landfill and you have a landfill fire, which is something that could last and cause a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's so important how this stuff is disposed of, it's disposed of properly.
Yeah, there's, there's so much more to it. Like I said, and maybe some of you've been on a tour of there before. I know we do a lot for schools, but, but we love doing them. We encourage it because a lot of people just don't understand what's really involved. And uh getting rid, getting rid of your waste.
Hey, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Gary. Yep. Okay, Sal, good morning. Sal, could you explain a little bit about what you do?
Sure. Um, I'm Sal Vick. I work for Lycomen County Planning and Community Development. I'm a transportation planner. I also work for the Williamsport Area Transportation Study Metropolitan Planning Organization, Watts MPO. I know you all know what that is, and everyone's super excited about transportation. Um, the item I have before the commissioners today is to approve a sub-recipient monitoring agreement. So the county gets funding from federal highways and also from PennDOT and from Federal Transit Administration. This agreement allows the county to take the money from the Federal Transit Administration and pass it through to River Valley Transit Authority, so the, the local buses. Have any of you wrote on those at all? This helps pay for that service and planning services that they, they provide.
Great, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Sal, could you explain a little bit about what the planning department?
Sure.
So we have an idea, we have.
Yeah.
County has a planning department, so.
We have um a planning and community uh development department. Uh, they do everything from transportation planning to hazard mitigation planning. So with the hat that I wear, um, some of you probably saw, or your parents definitely saw, one of the major projects the county just wrapped up uh was a bridge bundling program. Over at the county assisted seventeen local municipalities with replacing bridges that were in dire need of repair. Um, other things that we do in the planning department is that, under the hazard uh hat or, or column, would be um home uh buyouts for flood-prailing properties. Um, they're actually um working on the levy recertification now as well. Um, my colleague Malik will be up here in a minute for a, a step um agreement using um fair funding for, for housing initiatives. We also do subdivision land development zoning, so for instance, if you're in the county zoning partnership, which is a number, I believe it's twenty-two municipalities, um we control the zoning or not control and enforce the zoning for them. So if you want to put a garage or you want to build a new, a new home on property, we would um funnel that process as well. Um, if you're recording a land development or deed, we also do a lot of that um work in our department, as well as provide um mapping support, GIS support for different municipalities and different entities here within the county.
So we did, uh, like Sal mentioned, did eighteen bridges in the county. And one bridge, I'm sure that you're very familiar with, that you probably go across and you probably don't even realize that there's a bridge there.
Oh, that.
The one by Faxon, Faxon and Sheridan Street, where the Boeing alley is, there's a little bridge right there.
It doesn't look like it. It's not what anyone would think is a bridge, but it is classified as a bridge. So probably what, twenty twenty-three, when that intersection was closed down and you saw the big equipment there, that was one of the bridge replacements that we, we performed.
So there's, you'll, you'll see the stream, it comes down off of Four Mile, so you'll see it up on Four Mile coming down, and then it goes under Sheridan Street, and then it'll run down behind Rifles, that little street. So that has, actually has a bridge underneath the roadway.
But there's a lot of different bridges we've, we've replaced, and you think about, you, you go across these bridges, you only think about it's some we know are there, some we don't know that are there. But you think about school buses are going across these, and, and that happened out in Pittsburgh a couple of years ago. It collapsed, you know, and there's, there's people that are hurt. So you gotta take care of your infrastructure. Bridges are part of that infrastructure, they're critical. And Sal and his team worked on those, and we were able to do the five-dollar registration fee that people pay on their vehicles, an extra five dollars went into that fund to pay for those bridges.
It was a very, it was a very good program, and it's actually been um looked at across the state to see how other counties can, can replicate that kind of coordination and, and help other municipalities.
And they're, um, your team receiving an award from the state regarding that, that project.
The Bridge Safety Award, yeah. So that was pretty, pretty awesome.
And some of the other stuff like planning does is, Sal mentioned the, the hazard mitigation. So if you look at the, the, the little stream that runs along the tennis court, and then it crosses under Reed Street and then goes down through. So um the county was very instrumental helping Oil Sock to pay for that cleanup and how that cleanup of that stream should be laid out so that that did not wash away and create flooding in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Malik. Malik, can you just tell them a little bit about what you do?
Absolutely. Um, I'm a community economic development planner, so I also work in the planning department with Sal and so many other colleagues. Primarily, my role is grant management, but also project management. Um, one of the items that I'm going to share on today is the Fair Grant, which is a state uh funded. One of the items that I'm gonna share on today is the Fair Grant, which is a state-funded program based on the gas tax received to the state of Pennsylvania. And based on the region, we receive a, a certain portion of those funds dedicated just for our county. And these funds goes towards community partners that serve our community in many ways, so if you know STEP or American Rescue Workers or Habitat for Humanity, programs like that, they apply for funding so that their programs could be, have funds applied to the programs to help subsidize the cost of their operation in a given year. And the item I'm gonna speak on today is an amendment, which is a, either a time extension or a change of scope. But this one in particular is a time extension, and this is at no cost. Commissioner, seeking your approval for the amendment to the agreement with STEP Inc., Fair twenty-two, twenty-three, for their Master Releasing Program, time extension.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Malik, have a good day. Okay, Leslie. And like, morning. Lake Hurley County has their own IT department, that's just part of that department, you wanna explain a little bit about that department?
I'm Leslie Co-Patrick, I'm IT Operations for Lake Hurley County. We actually have two directors in our department, and we have programmers in our department, and we have PC techs and network engineers. We take care of all of the hardware and software in Lake Hurley County. It keeps us very busy.
So if any of you are interested in an IT background someday, we have opportunities, but there's opportunities nationwide.
Yeah.
IT is on.
Yeah.
Information. They run the computers.
So six point one for Commissioner, seeking your approval to renew our maintenance on forty-seven infrastructure devices through E-plus technologies in the amount of forty-four thousand thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
And I apologize, that is a twenty twenty-five approved budgeted item. Six point one-five, seeking your approval to renew forensic software for the DA's office in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and ten dollars, that it is also twenty twenty-five approved budget.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Leslie, have a good day. Maya, before you start, can you explain about what you do and your role as in the county?
Yep, I'm the Director of Financial Management for the county, so I oversee all procurement, purchasing, grant management. I also do legal compliance and warrants for contractual obligations, the budget, and financial management as a whole.
Yeah.
My first item I have for you, six point sixteen, it's vote to ratify the RACP Amendment to extend the term date to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This is as part of the levy project, and this is just some housekeeping items.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
Six point seventeen, vote to approve the Notice of Grant and Agreement Award for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. This is with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, it's in the amount of one million six hundred sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And as you know, this is gonna help fund fourteen projects, mostly located in the Trout Run area, impacted by the last event that occurred, and it's for stream bank restoration projects.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All, all fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
Six point eighteen, vote to approve the Operation and Maintenance Plan in Agreement with the Natural Resources Conservation Service. Again, this is tied with the previous agenda item as related to the Emergency Watershed Protection Program.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
And the last item I have is vote to ratify the Indigent Defense Grant, Grant Program Modification Request. They have extended the current new grant allocation we received this year to extend into the following year, which will help offset an investigator in the Public Defender's Office.
And motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
All fair side?
I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Jump the gun. Okay, well Ken's on his way up, you see another gentleman at the end of the table down here, Mr. Kenyon. He is our solicitor, could you explain to him, the, the group here, what exactly what your role is in this county?
My role is to act as what's called a general solicitor, so I give general legal advice to the county commissioners. That can range anywhere from contract review and services, general municipal law relative to how they conduct their meetings, the things that can be discussed in a meeting, things that can be released out to the general public for review and consumption. We also do HR-related affairs, sometimes inter-office mediation, addressing communications with, within the departments. Essentially, if it's legal-related, we're probably touching it in one way or another. What we don't necessarily do is, unfortunately, if the county does get sued, which unfortunately happens sometimes, those services do get outsourced, but we do handle the day-to-day operational affairs of the county, from a legal standpoint.
So he is a lawyer, lawyer background, a law firm that's been contracted by the county.
Sometimes he'll sit here and really won't say anything, and sometimes when we get to public comment, sometimes the, the public has specific questions about things that is above our pay grade, and he can kind of walk them through what's done and why it's done the way it is, what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do, because one of the things that the public doesn't know is, like, we don't make laws, we don't, you know, they don't always understand all the branches of government, what we're actually allowed to do and what we have no control over. A lot of times Chris has to explain that.
Thank you. Ken, explain a little bit about what you do and your name and, and what your department overall sees.
Sure, my name is Ken George, I am the Director of Facilities Management. And what that pertains to is all the properties, buildings for the county we're responsible for maintaining. We do the, the plumbing, the HVAC, electrical work, when you walk in, the lighting that comes on is because we're maintaining it and taking care of it. We purchase the electrical, the water, the natural gas, all those type of things, and make sure it's used in an efficient manner.
They also do build-outs, construction within, actually done different buildings, right now they're down on the first floor, remodeling that, so a lot, a lot of different, a jack of all trades.
Yes, we, we have a very good team, and we do, like he said, we do builds, we're, right now we're in the middle of doing a build on the first floor, which will be our register and recorder and some water storage areas down there. We are, we're in the midstream of overseeing a build for the Coroner's Building up on Wahoo Drive. We're hope to get that done this fall, that's quite a large project, we're in the planning of a District Justice Building up in Jersey Shore, which our team will actually do pretty much all the construction on. So we are very diverse, so if any of you are looking at trades, getting into trades, it's, it's a thriving industry.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, before you, as morning, on six point two oh, is an agreement with RJ Erdel, what we're doing, we're separating the water line from the county farmhouse and the county farm itself, so we need to have that separated and install a new service for the county farm.
Okay, thank you. Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Have a good day.
Commissioner, comment?
I, I don't want to take away from, from the excitement of today's proclamation for the oil sock Lancers, so that's all I'm gonna talk about. Again, just so proud of, of your team and what you accomplished. So happy that you put Lake Hurley County and our community on the map with your win. You're recognized all over the state, that's awesome. I look forward to watching you guys win again next year. And thank you for attending and staying and learning a little bit about county government while you were here.
Thank you.
Do anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, as exciting as I know this was for you for the last hour, this is kind of what county government is, it's not, you see the politics and the people fighting on TV, and there are really no fireworks with this job, it's, we have money that comes in and we have to figure out where it should go. Whether it's to a charity like Habitat or the YWCA, or whether it's to a municipality that needs upgrading with their water systems, or, you know, last year there was an issue up by, up in Jersey Shore where the, where it broke in the winter, and we had to, people didn't have sewage. So we had to, you know, put in emergency funding to do that, so we basically run the county business-wise. Whereas where do we spend, where do we save? We just decided to buy for our, our district magistrate, who is a judge, the judge up in Jersey Shore, we were leasing a building and we didn't really like the building, we didn't really like the lease, and we got the opportunity to buy a piece of land and we're gonna build a building. But that all comes with costs, so we had to sit down and decide, is this worth it? We have, you know, is this where we want to spend money for the long run, is it a good idea? So that's what we do all day, every day, like, where's the money go, where does it need to go? What adjustments do we need, need to make in departments? So it, it's not glamorous, you know, it's kind of like, it's a little bit like basketball, like the games are fun, but all the work that you have to put in on the other side isn't always fun to get to where you need to be, but we feel like we can make a difference, and you know, we're just trying to help make the community better.
One of the best parts about being a commissioner is celebrating people that deserve to be celebrated in our community. Whether that's someone who turned a hundred, and you're going to their birthday party and giving them a proclamation, or celebrating our youth. And, because you're our future, and, you know, Eagle Scout meetings and, and we celebrate them and, and their accomplishments. And occasionally we have other groups of individuals that, that get celebrated. And today's one of those days. This is the best part of the job, is celebrating our youth and, and taking a moment to share in your joy and your accomplishment. And so that, I would say that's probably one of the best parts of our jobs. And fulfilling parts of our job is seen, you know, because we, you know, a lot of times the youth get a bad rap. And, and the negative ones could put in the paper and, and in the news. And we need to make sure that whether you're in the arts, or whether you're, you're in theater or music or sports, whatever you're in, the groups that you're in, that you're celebrated for your accomplishments. And so today's a, a good day, and like we said, today's Lady Lancer Day in Lake Hurley County. And so thank you for being here. Anybody from the public like to make a comment?
Any of the ladies want to say anything?
Yeah.
Sure, they do, they have lots. No?
No?
No, you're gonna be quiet? How many of you are, are a bunch of run the track? Are any of you playing softball?
Great.
Play a lot of sports tonight and softball. I thought you had a torch. Oh, it's gonna be alright, we're good. Not coming till late night, yeah, we're okay, fantastic.
Yeah. Okay, none from the audience, any online?
Yes, there's one from Thomas Adams.
Okay.
Says, "Good morning, Lake Hurley County, from Williamsport Area School District. Congratulations to the oil sock Lady Lancers, you have brought great memories of joy to our area. Thank you for the examples of tenacity and dedicated work. A model of discipline to succeed in sports, which is how to have a successful society. Playing within the perimeters of rules, which gives safety and order to basketball and every sport. Law and order paramount for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness to continue into the future. Without the rules, the sport has no meaning and devours into chaos and is neither safe or fun. One more thing is true for every successful program and for our lives, always keep a positive can do matter. What attitude, even the, the toughest and distressing of times, we can always, always, always be an example and a strength to someone else. God bless Lake Hurley County and may God bless America."
Okay, thank you. Well, we've completed our agenda, so on this first day of May, Lady Lancer Day, we will be adjourned to our next meeting on Thursday, May ten AM, right here in this meeting room. Thank you.